Good evening, everyone, and welcome to another episode of Turn Left. I am your host, Indiana's own Dana Black coming to you live. Yes, all the way live from Black Pearl Studios. We talk about Indiana politics from the left side of things. Guys, I'm telling you, I'm having the time of my life. I went to the DNC meeting last week, which is why we didn't have a show. So I had great guests scheduled, and I want to make sure that those candidates get a chance to share their stories. So tonight, we got, we're gonna do a special. It's gonna be a nice conversation with the history maker. I'm talking straight up Indiana history maker, my fellow Stonewall Board member, Hoosier Women Forward, Victory in Doris candidate, and also was the star in the 2020 DNC video for the Pledge of Allegiance, running for City Council in Greenfield.
Green Castle.
Green Castle. Dang it. I knew I was gonna mess it up. In Greencastle, my friend, my friend, the Honorable Veronica Pedro. Veronica, welcome to the show.
Oh, thank you so much, Dana. It's, I'm just delighted to be here. It's, it's great to be reconnecting with you and, and seeing all that you're doing in your community. And obviously, we've got so much happening in ours, and I'm happy to talk to you about that today.
Absolutely. And you know, we've been, this is your second visit on the show. This is the first time remote. The last time you were able to come into the studio, but COVID taught us how to do things differently, right?
That's right.
So talk about, just a little, just give a little bit of your history, because people know who you are. Just give a little bit of your history. Tell people who you are and where you come from.
Yeah, Dana, thanks so much. My name is Veronica Pedral. I'm the daughter of a municipal water engineer and a public school teacher. I'm not Hoosier born, but I'm Hoosier by choice for nearly 30 years now. And I've called Greencastle my forever home for most of those 30 years. So while I wasn't born here, my roots are very deeply planted here. Other things about myself, you know, I'm a parent of twins, and they're both Purdue grads, and they're both living, working, and paying taxes here in the state of Indiana. So, so really excited about that, including my son Joe, who lives, works, and pays taxes here in Greencastle. Greencastle is a vibrant city of 10,000. We're actually, you know, I, I, I watched with such joy your video that you did with my friends, Robert Pope from Avon and Erin Collins from Chesterton. Chesterton, this, so she went to the same school district that my, my kids did up there in Chesterton. They both, they all went to Chesterton High School. But, uh, yeah, it's interesting how towns and cities work in, in the state of Indiana, because Greencastle is a city. Greencastle is, is a city that this year, we're celebrating our bicentennial.
Wow.
Yeah, the 200 years.
Y'all know that.
We're, we, we've been around for a while here. We are the county seat here in Putnam County, Indiana. And interestingly enough, we're smaller than either the town of Chesterton or the town of Avon. So while the, both of those communities, yeah, Avon's about twice our size, but Avon, as far as its, its municipal, municipally organized self, is very much a much more recent incarnation. So it was really interesting to hear Robert talk about the, the history of Avon in the course of just a couple decades of history, right? We've got hundreds of years of, of progress here in Greencastle, including, you know, some other historic victories, you know, or historic elections that happened in our community, which I might talk to you about at some point throughout this. You know, other things that I want to share, you know, since I was elected in November of 2019, I've had a platform, which is sometimes feels pretty weighty on my shoulders, because when you're the only one of something in your state, people, people lean into you a lot to be of, not only a voice, but to also be a set of ears.
Yeah.
So I've had the privilege to be engaged in places where it might be harder for some other folks to get into. So it's a, it's a challenging situation to be in, but I think I'm doing the best I can to balance my commitment to both my city and, and the community that we live in here, as well as some of the service work that I do perhaps more broadly on a regional or even a state level. So, you know, within the sorts of places that I've plugged in in the last couple of years, I, I think about, I'm plugging into places where I feel I can do the most good in our community. So I'm working with our county housing stability committee and talking about what we can do to improve outcomes for our low income renters in the community, as well as to ensure that people don't fall through the cracks and find themselves unhoused, because it's a lot easier to help somebody stay housed than it is to help somebody out of an unhoused situation.
Absolutely, absolutely. And you know, affordable housing, every candidate that I've talked to this year, that, that has been the main topic of conversation, affordable housing. And it's not just low income housing or government assisted housing. It is, if I make, if I work 40 hours a week and I make 40 grand, I should still be able to have a roof over my head. And, and that's what affordable housing is. It's not about the, the, you know, government assistant. And so talk about what you're seeing in Greencastle, I'm gonna get it right now. Greencastle, that, that, that you, you obviously mentioned it. What are you, what are you seeing there? And, and what changes are you guys working on, on the city council?
Well, you know, as I, as I look around the community and, and see where people are challenged, particularly in light of the discontinuation of expanded child tax care credits from the federal level, we know that child poverty in our community has gone up, nearly doubled since, since the federal, the folks in, in the federal legislature decided to let that expire. People are, people are feeling that. So especially parents in our community who had really relied on that extra, extra funding to help them stay in their homes and, and get food on the table for their kids. That's, that's a no small thing. You know, but, you know, a lot of the same challenges that we find anywhere else in the state, we're, we're seeing here in Greencastle too. So people often talk about the mental health crisis in our community and how it intersects with, with, with substance use disorder, and how we can help folks into recovery in a variety of ways, through a variety of pathways. You know, here in rural Indiana, a lot of the pathways into recovery are church sponsored organizations. And I've recently joined the board of our Putnam County Recovery Coalition, which is doing the work to ensure that there are pathways that are secular, so that everybody has a way to plug into solutions for, for recovery. Everybody deserves this chance. And this is personal to me. I lost my oldest sister to overdose just six years ago.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, it was, and, and she was about the age I am now. And so that, that was a hard loss for me. But, but also, you know, there, all of these things intersect, Dana, whether, whether it's housing, mental health, access to recovery solutions, and, and the, the way that we treat our neighbors in our community is all intertwined. I, I lost a dear friend who, who lived in, in our community here in Greencastle. As a side consequence, I should say, of her falling out of recovery. And this was, there are so many intersections with, with Taylor's story, but this was six, 16 years ago. It was literally four elections ago in, in our community. And Taylor was a young and passable trans woman who was, you know, transitioned very early. And she was living in a, a, not a great apartment building on, on Meridian, near 38th in Indianapolis. She's, she was a great hairstylist. I helped her move to Greencastle, helped get a roof over her head. And, and, and she'd been clean for about a year. And we helped get a, get her nephew, because she had custody of her nephew. We helped get, yeah, we helped get Eric enrolled in Greencastle Public Schools, and we found Taylor a job working at a local salon here. And everything was going fine until somebody decided to out her as trans in, in her workplace. And she was summarily fired from that job back in 2007. We managed to find new work for her in the community. But then the, the first salon owner went to the second salon, and this is what happens in small towns. And, and outed her there too. So they were on a vendetta to
Hurt this person.
To see to it that, that they were not welcome in the community here. This was the straw that I later learned sent Taylor back out of recovery and into using again. At this point, I, she was no longer living under my roof, because I had found her a pathway. Yeah, I found her an affordable place on, in, in our eastern part of the town. And she rolled her truck in late October, 16 years ago. And there were these kids from, from North Putnam High School, big news here in, in Putnam County, that they rescued her from her, her flaming truck. And as with a lot of folks who are in recovery, they, they have things like Hep C, which make you immunocompromised and all. She was, as they were pulling her out of the truck, the one thing that, that she was saying to these heroes was about her status and making sure that they knew to take precautions about her, right? It turns out that, that one of the first two people on the scene who helped Taylor get out of her truck is the, is the sister of my next door neighbor. Literally the house outside the window here. And, and, you know, they're, they're, they're Trump sign house, but that doesn't mean that we can't see the humanity in one another.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And so I wanted, you know, when, when I talk about Taylor, I often think about what unites us and what work we have to do here in Greencastle. And I know I'm sort of skipping around on topics here.
No, no, you're good. You're good. We're keeping up, though.
But, but you know, Taylor's story and, and what, you know, precipitated her falling out of recovery had a lot to do with her neighbors not making her feel welcome in the community, right? And that's why I'm pushing right now at this time, as we're having conversation about who belongs on our city council, that we really need to advance the notion of putting forth a proper and enforceable human rights ordinance.
Yes.
Here in the city of Greencastle, that's inclusive to everyone and protects in employment and education and housing and accommodations, so that everyone not only knows that they're welcome, but that they've got a local remedy in the event of, of, of finding a solution out of the harm from this. So when I think about how this can work in a community the size of 10,000, because four years ago, the council prior to my election took a good step forward. They passed a resolution forming a Human Relations Commission, which listens to concerns in the city about Title VI Civil Rights Act stuff, as well as ADA stuff. But, but we are an advisory committee. We have no, we have no enforceable remedy.
Sure.
Right? And I want to, that's a good step forward. You know, I was talking last week with the Human, Human Rights Director at the city of Columbus. Mind you, this is a city five times the size of us, thinking and just brainstorming with her about ways that we might be able to make an enforceable, sustainable human rights ordinance in a city of our size. And, and, and she pointed out to me that, that the, the city council in, in Columbus actually passed the same kind of ordinance, or the, the same kind of resolution, creating a Human Relations Commission in 1962.
Dang.
57 years before Greencastle did. So I think we've got a little bit of catching up to do with respect to ensuring that everyone knows that, that they belong here.
Absolutely.
In, in our community. So
But I think, I think one of the, one of the things that, that helps set along is representation, right? Having you on, on the, on the city council, people can see that you, you don't just talk about trans issues. You don't talk about just LGBTQ plus issues. You're talking about things that matter to every citizen in your community, because when you are of a marginalized community, you have a tendency to see things a little different.
And you have, and you have a tendency to be able to perhaps more empathetically see the challenges that others are facing. So when I come to the table, I'm not only bringing my, my own experience on, on the queer front, but I'm also bringing my experience of having lost two loved ones to, to overdose or, or substance use. I lost a brother-in-law back in 1989 to a home gun safety accident. So I have, I have strong feelings about increasing our accessibility to gun locks in our community. Folks shouldn't have to go to a police station where not everyone feels welcome
Yes.
to, to get a gun lock to make sure that their kid isn't gonna find, you know, find, find the gun and have a horrible accident.
Accident.
Yeah, as we often see. And literally, my family was befallen by an accident.
And, and we, and we don't ever really want to, I mean, nobody's trying to take anybody's guns away. We always talk about, you know, the right person that should have a gun. Or now that Indiana has passed and now is in effect a permitless carry, you know, which law enforcement said they hated, not, trust, not believe, I'm not always siding with law enforcement, but in this one, you know, they're, they're right. They can't even, a couple of reasons. They can't determine who actually has or doesn't have. And when you look like me, everything looks like a weapon. And that's more dangerous to my life, right? Because, you know, so, so how do we, and how are, how do we, especially in small towns and rural communities where, you know, hunting and gunning for sport is, is part of the culture? How do we?
Absolutely.
And I don't, I don't have a problem with that. Like, that's your thing. Like, I don't. I like to barbecue instead. That's my thing. So, you know, everybody has their thing. So how do you have those conversations in rural Indiana, in Putnam County, in Greencastle about gun safety?
Well, when it comes down to making connections with any community that, that I'm not 100% always plugged into, right? Because folks, folks are often talking in their own disparate bubbles of stuff, right? I'm not deeply steeped in gun culture, though I'm, I don't disrespect it, right? My, 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 the fact is, though, that I find and make pathways for myself, often through volunteering for things to, to
I love it.
place myself in uncomfortable, or not uncomfortable, unfamiliar places, right? So say, for example, every Thanksgiving, there's, there's a group of churches in our community that does a combined ecumenical Thanksgiving meal service. So I go and help prepare the meals at, on Thanksgiving morning at a church that I don't attend.
Okay.
And so being in that space, I get to meet people and talk with them about their concerns, even though I attended different church in our community here in Greencastle. Other things that I've done, I, I think about what I've done in the last year or so. You know, my, my twins are, are turning 29 next week. I have no, I have no good reason to be in a children's library, but, you know, our United Way organization here offers opportunities to volunteer. And, and one of the places I sought to volunteer was re-shelving books in, in our local children's library, inside our public library. And so I met some parents there who I might not have ever met before.
Right.
And, and like, sometimes I'll, I'll go and volunteer to table for registration at a 5K. You're not gonna see me run in a 5K, Dana.
Me neither.
But, but, but I'll be talking and meeting with these people. I try to make intentional moves to place myself into unfamiliar spaces, so that we can begin to have hard conversations, whatever it's about. Whether it's, whether it's about increasing access to Narcan in our community, or whether it's about increasing access to, and, and locations to, to get gun locks. Now, yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Yeah. So let's talk about this first term. So you, you were elected in 19, the first time.
Yep.
And it was, like I said, it was a historic moment, right? And after we get, after we get past all of the first and all that, you still gotta govern, right? You still gotta legislate. What has that first four years from a legislative's perspective been? How, what have you learned about being on the council? And, and how have you learned to be, to reach across the aisle and, and, because in, in local politics, a lot of times the R and a D really don't matter. So talk about what your first four years as a legislator, as a counselor been for you.
Well, and, and I appreciate that you pointed out that, that it's hard to tell who's a D or an R based upon the way that we might vote in chamber. The fact of the matter is, is that we're, we're largely in accord and, and we find ourselves, you know, voting similar in, in, in chamber, because we're all working to, to improve our community. We rarely see contentious votes come up. And when they, they are contentious, it's often still challenging to determine whether the, you know, the dissenting vote might be a, an R or a D, because, you know, sometimes, sometimes, especially in our community here, Democrats can, can be more fiscally conservative than, than the Republicans sitting next to them. I appreciate that from the start, our Greencastle City Council has a long tradition of onboarding new council members by having a, having a member, a currently seated member of council who is from the other party do the onboarding.
Okay.
And, and so when I sat down with our second ward counselor, Stacy, who is a Republican, and we sit next to each other in chambers, she was my onboarder. And the first thing that she said when we sat down over coffee to go over some of the tradition, or some of the kinds of things that we would typically see in a council packet, the first thing that she said to me was, "I'm so glad you're here. We need more women on this council."
That's all that matters. I loved it. I loved it.
And, and to me, I don't think she could have said anything better. It was, it was an affirming and, and welcoming moment. And this is, you know, coming from, you know, some, somebody who attends one, one of our local Baptist churches here in, in town. You just can't make assumptions about the people who are next to you here, especially here in, in, in rural Indiana. So, you know, we're, we're a city of 10,000, as I mentioned before. When it comes down to this, this thing that we have to do every four years, and, and I'm glad we do it, because it's an opportunity for our community to reaffirm their trust in, 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 in their elected officials, that, that I, I, I am challenged now for the first time by needing to govern and run at the same time.
Same time, yeah.
And, you know, my, since I'm a ward counselor for one of four wards, I serve the third ward. I serve approximately 2,500 residents of Greencastle, and that boils down to about 600 houses.
Okay.
Of, or at least 600 houses with registered voters in them. And so when I go on, you know, canvassing walks to connect with folks in the community and ask them about, you know, what's been challenging, yeah, getting back to your original question of, you know, what's that first four years been like? I don't think it's been typical for any of us with COVID. I, I need to uplift that, you know, three months, less than three months after I was sworn in, we were locked down.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so we were, we, all of, all of my great ideas for, you know, neighborhood-based block parties that, that, that had some city subsidy for them, that just wasn't happening. Instead, we were talking about how can we protect our neighbors?
Yeah.
And, and, but, 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 you know, when, when we talk about being neighborly, and, and my mantra for my campaign in 2019 was that good neighbors make great neighborhoods. And, and that's not about who lives next door to you. That, that, that's about the, dare I say, the biblical interpretation of, of, of what's now known as, you know, love thy neighbor, that, that the original text was referring to strangers and people who are different and immigrants and, and the homeless. And, and that, that these are the people that we need to love and make sure that we don't oppress. And so that just sort of brings me full circle to so much of what I've been talking about here with you today, Dana.
I love it. And so what was there in the course of that first term? You know, obviously, things didn't go, you know, COVID had a whole lot to do with that, didn't go the way we wanted to. What is your, what do you feel like is your greatest accomplishment, that first, first term?
Well, you know, through all of it, of course, we had the assistance of the federal government to help us with recovery efforts and making sure, especially that the folks who were on the front lines of public service were not only protected, but, but better compensated for their work. Around the time that I was sworn in, our city did a salary study that, that was done by a third-party firm. It cost us money to do it, but it's important that we have that in impartial perspective on making sure that everyone who works for the city is, is fairly paid. We, we increased everyone's salary to at least parity with our peer communities. And that, of course, includes our public safety officers, our police and, and our fire. You know, I'm, I'm currently the council liaison this year for the Greencastle Police Department. And
I like that.
And I'm, I'm not calling out names. And I'm not referring to anybody who's currently sitting on council, but I've seen folks who use their position on council, and particularly their, their position as police liaison to do photo ops, doing ride-alongs with, with the force. And, you know, photo ops are one thing. What, what I've tried to do this, this year as liaison is to partner up with the Human Relations Commission, which I, I sit on, to bring in our law enforcement. We brought in our brand-new police chief to have a conversation about ways that we can improve outcomes for our police department calls, because often, especially here in rural Indiana, we're getting these sort of mail you of mental health crisis calls and, and, and mixed up often with substance use. And, and, you know, I'm not, I'm not saying anything that you're not seeing in, in Indianapolis, but we don't have a dedicated mobile crisis task force like, like that, that's unarmed, like, like Indianapolis does. So we've been having conversations about, well, how can we scale some, something for our community that's going to improve outcomes, not only for the person who's having a mental health crisis, but also for the police officer who might otherwise need to be sitting with them in, at the ER for three hours, because there, there's nobody there to support the police officer.
I like it. I like it. I like it a lot. All right. So those, those are great plans. And, you know, unfortunately, we can't rest on our laurels. We can't, we can't rest on what we did. Talk about what you are looking forward to working on over the next four years when you, when you win your reelection.
Well, in, in speaking about winning, you know, 2019 was historic on a number of levels. And one of them, you know, I'll point out that I, I received nearly 70% of the votes. And one of them, you know, I'll point out that I, I received nearly 70% of the vote in my district.
Come on, 70%.
Which, you know, it was 68. something, I think. But, but that was, that was pretty amazing affirmation that, that, that.
You're a part of the community and they, they, they want you to represent them. That's it. That's all.
Yeah. And, you know, even after having served for four years, I, I gotta admit, you know, there are some times where I still have some imposter syndrome. You know, after, you know, five decades on this planet, I still have imposter syndrome in certain places where that, again, those unfamiliar spaces that, that if I don't put myself into them. But, but anyway, you asked me what my plans are for the next, for the next four years. So I didn't, I didn't want to reflect too much. I just wanted to uplift that, 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 that was an amazing, an amazing ratio.
Yeah, it was. I was, look, real talk, I was happy we're getting 32% against Brian Bosma. You know what I'm saying? Like, you take your, you take your wins where they are and the fact, I mean, there was 32% of the voters that said, you know what? We gonna give the dreadlock, cross-dressing African-American lesbian in our 1% community an opportunity to serve. That's a lot of people. And like you said, imposter syndrome is real. We don't always know that we belong in a space and just that affirmation. Because again, I had received more votes than anyone who ran against him in that district up to that point. But more importantly, I was able to kick the door in a little bit so that subsequently three more women and one more woman of color ran behind me. And those are the, those are the wins. Those are the wins. So don't, hey, don't trip. I love that you're sharing this with us. I love it. But we gotta talk about policy. What do you want to do?
You know, I, so like I already shared with you, I'm very excited to be advancing the, 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 the Human Rights Ordinance for our community or something that, that does provide that actionable remedy at the local level for folks who are facing discrimination in, in our city. Because it's, it's not something that we can deny.
Right.
Other things that are really important to me and, and to some of my folks on the other side of the aisle as well here in Greencastle is finding some creative ways to expand our housing inventory. You know, and, and if that, our, our city council is pretty new to the abatement game when, when it comes down to housing. I know that bigger cities like, like Indy or even in the donut around Indy, that this is more or less how they operate. And of course, we have to compete with those developers and, and those, those municipalities over there just to even get interest in building here. So, so we have to work extra hard. My point is, is that I think we can do a number of things that, some of which we've already done, like, like doing some creative rezoning. We've done that in the third ward where it would have been impossible to build a structure because of the setbacks for, for structures on a property and, and, and legacy homes that were built on adjoining properties. So we've done that. I think we can go further on that. I think we can continue perhaps to explore the, the abatement solution. But what I want to make sure, especially if we're talking about using abatement to expand housing at, at the entry level or at the low-income level, that we get a commitment in writing, that we get a deal struck with those folks to ensure that we're not just giving somebody money to kick out existing.
Yes.
You know, low-income subsidized renters, right?
Right.
We don't need to be gentrifying our community here because everybody belongs.
I love it. I love it.
That, that, that's a big part.
Okay. What else you got?
Oh, well, what else do I got? I think with that, we, you know, we've got a, we've got, I've personal things going on with some of my involvement that I've already shared. You know, like I said, I've just joined the, the Recovery Coalition, brand-new 501(c)(3) here in, in, in the community. And I think that, that the, the city can step up with some of our currently sitting idle opioid settlement funding.
Okay.
To, to grant to this and similar organizations to improve outcomes for folks facing, facing addiction. I think that, that our homeless shelter, the director actually works, like I mentioned before, to, to really try to work on the proactive side of things and ensure that people don't find themselves unhoused. Because it's, it's cheaper and easier to help somebody stay housed than it is to house somebody who's unhoused.
Yes, yes.
But, 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 you know, we have a women's shelter in our community and they've recently, using some grant funding, put, put together a, a day shelter that, that men can use as well.
Nice.
There's, there's sleeping space, there's laundry space, but we can do more. I would love to see a dedicated men's shelter within the, within the city limits.
Okay.
There are solutions elsewhere in the county, but, but I think, you know, especially given access to employment and transportation, because these are the things that can lift, you know, these, these are the supportive elements that a community can provide to lift somebody out of poverty and out of homelessness that, that we're going to empower people to, to get that leg up. And, and, you know, we've got some other great organizations that we're partnering with to, to help folks who are in need. And, and it is a good, strong partnership of, you know, our township trustee, our Family Support Services here in Greencastle, even Main Street Greencastle is, is, is working with our downtown businesses to find ways to ensure that everything is not only accessible, but, but that there's, that there's a place for everybody in, in the community.
You know what? I'm gonna tell you. I mean, I, I mean, I already know you. We hang out at Victory in DC. We, you know, we serve together on Stonewall. But listening to you talk today, and I hope everyone who is interested in voting for you feels this one thing when it comes to Veronica Pedral. She cares about humans more than anything else. And it's about, not just about, you know, can they work, but, but that they have a quality of life and that they want to stay in the community. They, there's a means for them to do that. And I, everything you talked about today was about how do we make the human better? And I think that is a strong attribute, especially with all the crazy that we're seeing around the world right now. I mean, we're seeing a lot of crazy right now. And, and Putnam County, and Greencastle, Fourth Ward, you guys are very, very lucky to have someone who is representing you, who cares about your well-being. I don't, I hope you never lose that. I mean, cause you're, I mean, you're a university professor. You know, you could be like, oh, I'm here, why didn't you get here? But you're not. You're all about, you are all about how do we improve the lives of humans? And I applaud you because we could sit around and talk about just the historic nature of you being the first openly trans person elected in our entire state. But more importantly, you're using that platform to improve the people around you. You're leaving the ladder down and you're offering space for everyone to find acceptance in your community and y'all's community, not just your, y'all's community. And I applaud you and I love you. I mean, you already know that. I love you and I'm so excited for what you are about to do over the next four years. All right, tell the people where they can find you so they can support you.
Yeah, so, so thanks for that question, Dana. My, my name is Veronica Pedral, P-E-J-R-I-L. And, and having a unique last name means that, of course, the great thing is that everybody can find you on the internet. And that's also the scariest thing, is that everybody can find you on the internet. When, when, when my kids were born in 1994, I bought my last name as a dot com, mostly so that my children could have email addresses that were legacy. So, you know, they, they, you could just email them at pedral.com, right? I never thought that I would ever be, you know, in, in public service, especially when, you know, when I was spending four years at home as a stay-home parent and, and slogging to, to get food on the table for them. I feel blessed and privileged to, to serve. You can support the campaign by going to www.pedral.com. And that's a one-stop shop for everything from, you know, financially supporting the campaign or just reading about my story. And also, you know, if you, if you live in the city limits and you still need a yard sign, I've got a, I've got a few more to, to spare around here.
I love it. I love it. And do you have any events coming up that people can volunteer for?
Well, you know, here's the interesting thing. Early voting starts tomorrow.
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
Today is 10:10, 10:11. Let's go.
So as, as of the airing of this broadcast, of course, early voting will have already started. And so I've already, along with a great team of neighbors who've walked their own blocks telling our good story to their neighbors. We've already, as of 1 PM today, visited every door in my district to share that good story. So, you know, I'm, I'm happy to continue talking to folks in the community. We're a small community. So if there's a concert or, or a band playing at the local whiskey bar, there's, there's probably gonna be some voters that I run into there.
I love it.
And, and so it's a small community. It's very personal, you know, as they say, the personal is political. No more is that true than in, you know, a place like the third ward of, of, of the city of Greencastle. My, yeah, I, I, I lost my train of thought a little bit there.
That's all right. That's all right. Well, you know what? You know, we're gonna call this a, a show, cause I tell you what, I really do appreciate you taking time out of your busy schedule. Congratulations on, did I say the fourth ward? You're in the third ward. I, you know what?
That's right. I subtly corrected you, Dana.
Wait, wait. Here's the crazy part. Like, all these things I already know. Like, I know these things and I still, my mouth still messes up. And that's the joy. Like, there's grace in everything that we do. So thank you for, for the grace on the Greencastle and the wrong ward. But Indiana's Own Dana Black, this was a great conversation with my dear friend. I, I love it when I get to talk to my buddies on the show because we just chop it up like we, we sitting around the campfire doing what we do. As always, I've got, I've got more candidates coming on. We're gonna try to get as many as I possibly can. That's why we're doing these recorded shows so that I can talk to as many candidates so that you can hear who they are and you can find ways to support them as we do begin this early voting. Time is of the essence. Don't stay home. Get out and vote. Every election matters, as you can see.
Oh, Dana, can I take one brief moment?
Yeah.
That, that 2007 election I was talking about, when, when Taylor passed away, I didn't vote that year because my, my friend was dying in the, the Wishard Burn Ward. Our third ward election in 2007 was a tie.
Wow. It would've made all, you would've made, you would've been the difference maker.
I would've made, I could've been the difference maker.
You were the difference maker.
So, so one vote.
One, every vote matters. That's it.
That's, that's history.
Right. And that's a great story. That's why every vote matters. And then when people tell you that it doesn't matter, they just gaslight you. Don't believe it. Do not believe that your vote matters. All right. Indiana's Own Dana Black, turn left. I will holler at you guys next time. Turn left is the property of Black Pearl IT Solutions. Executive producer, Indiana's Own Dana Black. Music by www.bensound.com.